We're going to call the, call to order the town council meeting for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven o'clock here in the Harvey Room. Roll call, please.
Council Honan, here. Council Fusillo.
Here.
Council Munson.
Here.
Council Belcho.
Here.
Council DiMarco.
Present.
Council Placot, here. Council Ayello.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
Vice President Matarri.
Yeah. Please rise for the pledge. Led by Vice President Ruggiero.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes that were distributed earlier today, I believe. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Council DiMarco, second by Council Munson. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Always know the ayes have it. Under general information and recommendations, we have two items we're going to discuss. We're going to take them a little out of order. And we have Andrew Valkora here from CHA Consulting, who's going to give us an update on the TIPS project. We had inquired through Mast Dot for some information, and they did get back to us. And Andrew will give you the floor, if you want to step up to it.
So, last time we met, I gave a presentation going over the project, and the town council asked us to go back to Mast Dot and ask about some questions. Those were related to bicycle accommodations, some additional funding for things like trees, bus stop shelters, and lighting. So, we met with Mast Dot, Steve, Tony.
November fourth.
On November fourth, and about, I don't know, a dozen engineers and people at Mast Dot. So, they indicated that, you know, any changes to the bicycle accommodations at this point would require us to revisit the design exception process, which is, can be a lengthy process, and they warned that it would likely delay the project and jeopardize funding for the project altogether, if we went back to the drawing board on bicycle accommodations. So, you know, that may not be the news you were looking for, but that is where things stand at this point in relation to the bike lanes.
All right. So, basically, we're going to go forward with the project as designed, is my understanding.
We have also trees.
Yep, we're going to go over the trees. Yep, yep, yep. And, you know, there was concerns about, we went over briefly, trees taken down, I think, and we'll ask Andrew to verify, but my understanding is there's four to seven being taken down and up to twenty being replanted. And also, we had some questions on the, on the bus accommodation, and I know that people are looking at the new bus map, but I think Mast Dot's, I thought, is regardless of what happens, it's going to take multiple years for it to be enacted, and they're going to have to redress that. But if you want to address the trees?
Yeah, so the trees, like you said, we count seven being taken down. There's like one twelve-inch tree, the rest of them are smaller trees, two- to four-inch sized trees. You know, we put in, you know, we submitted our hundred percent design, that was end of October. We put in for replacement trees, put in for twenty. We still got to figure out where we're going to put them with types, work with the Town Tree Committee on that. But we put in that, those trees in our design. So, you know, that's in there. We'll see what they have to say. I doubt they'll say no. They usually will fund replacement trees.
Isn't there any way to work around taking down that twelve-inch tree?
Um, you would, that tree is being, no. If we, for the benefits that require it to be taken down, no, which is creating a little pull-off shoulder as you approach Fort Banks Elementary School. So, it's in that little grass strip that's on the west side of Revere Street. So, we're widening into that strip so cars can pull off into the shoulder as they're waiting to pull into the elementary school. So, that's the reason we're taking them.
It would force us to start that lane a lot further down Revere Street, which would essentially make it, yeah, not function the way it's intended to function. You wouldn't get the queue length that you need.
We don't really have a problem with traffic backing up coming from the highlands.
I can assure you, we do.
We do.
I live it every day.
Okay. Because I always run into it from the opposite direction.
Yeah, it's both, it's in both directions.
I will take questions from the council, too, for any other updates. Yes, Council Ayello.
Did we mention lighting? Did we get any changes on lighting?
Um, so, yeah, so the town, so in the meeting, we were directed, or recommended, directed, I would say, by Mast DOT to formalize the request in a letter, which Tony and I will be working on, for lighting upgrades, for additional trees, which we're pretty confident that will get funded. Some additional signage, solar-powered signage for crosswalk, you know, and maybe even some speed signs, I don't know if we, right now, we have this, you know, solar-powered one. So, we're going to put that in a, in a formal request to Mast DOT.
Thank you. Sounds positive.
I would. Council DiMarco?
Yeah, I would like to cede my time to, if any of the mothers out front had anything that they wanted to share at this time. I know, I know that's out of order, but maybe we, maybe we wait till public comment.
Public comment, we will take input. Yeah. Tracy, are you, oh, I thought you were. Council Honan, Vice President Ruggiero.
Thank you. My question was on sidewalk, excuse me, crosswalks. Can you just go over, like, up and down Revere Street? No, I don't, you know, I suspect you have it committed to memory, but like, what the, are the crosswalk layouts going to be close to the same thing that they are now? And then, I'm assuming they're all going to have to be repaved, but are we going to have, like, the more modern ones where you can push the button and the lights will flash so the person knows you're trying to cross? And, like, they got up at the Heights and he's bossed in, and Crest Ave, we have it too. But is that like what we're going for?
Um, so, with the regard to the, you know, flashing lights, if you push a button and then the, the little two lights will flash back in sequential, that's a, that's something we'll consider for additional funding.
Okay.
That request.
You'll get it at the major intersections at, like, Yee's Corner.
Yeah.
And Crest, but the intermediate crosswalks, that's, will be in our letter to see.
Okay.
And, and they'll also be audible? You'll hear them?
Yeah, we'll, we'll request it.
Steve? Will the lights be on the top and the pole orange, because on the Crest Ave?
They will not be like Crest Ave in the street, they'll be on top.
Thank you.
Council Ayello?
Yeah, just to follow, in particular, there was an issue raised about the crosswalk near Golden Drive and the turning movement. How do those, how does the future condition change from what's there today? Since cars come around on a pretty fast turn, I think you vaulted the radius of the turn a little bit to slow traffic down, if I remember seeing it, and also the placement of the crosswalk and the lighting, et cetera, of the crosswalk near Golden Drive.
Uh, so, near Golden Drive, it's virtually staying in the same location where it is now.
Is it getting one of those flashing light things?
That's something we'll, we'll have to put in their request for.
Again, that'll be in the.
And, you know, Mast Dot definitely funds these things, they're receptive to them, they're very pro, you know, obviously, you know, they, they serve a purpose and they're effective to aid.
And is the turning movement for people coming from the Revere direction up to the hill, so possibly approaching Golden Drive, is that still the same radius that's there today, or is that different?
Uh, it's, it's effectively the same radius. I don't think you'll see any noticeable changes in the radius around that curve.
On the Hutchinson side of Revere Street?
No, on the, they're coming from Revere Beach.
Where there's the slide.
Where there's the free ride sometimes, if you get the arrow.
Yeah. Oh, that configuration changes. That configuration changes.
That changes for the better for the Golden Drive people, because cars are going to be coming a little slower around that turn.
Right, that's, okay, that radius, yes.
I think that came out right, so.
Yes, that radius at the Crest Ave intersection for that little turn lane on right, that will be tightened up a little bit.
Yeah.
And also narrower, that little lane will be narrower, so it'll help slow people down.
No, that was, that was a great feature.
Those crossing distances will be shortened.
There'll be significant changes to that intersection. Yeah. Council Munson?
Thank you, Council President. So, just to reiterate, you guys went back to the Mast DOT and said what, and came back with the denial because it jeopardizes the whole project. What did you guys specifically ask for?
I asked, I actually asked the question.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Andrew alluded to it, and then I asked it. I said, you know, on behalf of the community, the town council, the question that needs to be asked is if we, do we have the ability to, to proceed with this project without bike lanes? In other words, can we, can we build this? Do we have a choice?
Right.
The answer came back to me emphatically, no. It will jeopard, right? That was the words, Tony, right? It was.
It was a very firm, very firm answer.
Very firm answer, and I said, if you, if you choose to, to do that, you go back to square one, you start your design process all over again, and we can't guarantee you'll be funded. It'll certainly, you won't meet your, your advertising deadline, you'll probably lose funding.
So, the, the notion, I'm just looking out for the people that are just trying to get to school, get to the, to grocery store. There is not going to be a jeopardizing of a safety for people just to walk to, to school or walk to the grocery store or just around town. Those plans are still in place as they were originally proposed to us. Everything is still going to be to code, and there'll be a walking path on both sides of the, of Revere Street.
Oh, yes.
But we are taking from the, the land to be able to make space. Is that the nature of it?
No, we're not.
We're taking in terms, in terms of the easements? Is that what you're talking about? It's more, it's more for construction during the process. It's not, you know, we're not.
Widening the street to a.
No, you're talking about the, the right hand, the, the shortening of the grass strip from eight feet to four feet.
That's right.
That's to accommodate that, that right-hand turn lane for Fort Kings.
Okay. So, that's necessary, but that's still, there's still going to be a sidewalk that's passable.
There's still the same size sidewalk that's there now, which is five and a half feet, will remain there after the project. It's just going to be a, a narrower grass strip.
Yeah. And then, just to confirm, just to kind of say it out loud, did we have a net loss of parking spots, or is there?
Yes, there's a net loss of parking spaces. As you, as they're utilized today, there's a net loss of parking.
And do you know that number?
Uh, so, you have, we've, it's, parking spaces are used inconsistently, and they're not marked, so it's, you know, roughly eight on that one side of the road where we're going to have the bike lane. And then, there's two other on the other side of the road where we still have parking, but we have to move a bus stop that's currently at the Harvard Street intersection, or? Governor's. Governor's, excuse me. So, that's like, it's currently blocking driveways, it stops in the middle of a crosswalk across Revere Street, so we're just, we have to shift that back. Now, that bus stop is actually going to go away once the MBTA reroutes their buses, their bus routes, so those two spots will gain back. And that's going to be rolled out in the next five years. So, I think, you know, take away eight spots at that Shirley Street intersection area is where.
So, that, that actually.
Council Flacott?
Yeah.
I don't think that bus stop is going to go away, because those people still need transportation into town. So, even if the MBTA doesn't provide it, they're still going to be walking out of that community to the main street to get their transportation of some kind.
We're just going off what the MBTA is telling us that's going to happen within five years, and that's one of the stops they're saying is being limited.
I understand that, but I also understand that those people still need transportation into town, and so they're going to have to come up with something, and they're probably going to be walking out of Governor's Park to the main road.
Yeah.
To get a carpool or get an Uber or, you know, a taxi or whatever.
Yep. If I may just add one thing to the, so, for the net loss, to answer your question, for the net loss, eight to ten spots, what's very important to understand is five of those spots, spots that are being used today that really aren't compliant with Mast DOT standards, parking in intersections, you know, parking within twenty feet to a crosswalk, so we're trying to build this to Mast DOT standards, and then, like Andrew said, two of the spots that are being, you know, affected will be returned once the bus, if that MBTA's plan comes to fruition, which they seem pretty confident that it's going to, we'll get those two spots.
Council DiMarco?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, so, I'm, I'm a little concerned because, and I appreciate your clarification on that, Mr. Callahan, because I'm a little concerned right now, we're, we're talking about losing eight spots on Revere Street, right? Last night, we just had a Rules and Ordnance Committee meeting, talking about losing eight to twelve spots in the center.
That already happened.
Already happened. But we're losing spots, you know what I mean? So, so, I just, I just think the town needs to be concerned with residents who are losing their parking spaces. That, that's the only thing I wanted to bring up, is, is like, it all adds up. We take a little bit here, we take a little bit here, you know, we've already had a parking issue, you know? Actually, it's, it's actually a, it's an issue that is, people have argued about it. Some people think there's no parking issues, some people think there's parking issues. Well, for the people who think there's parking issues, it's adding up. So, I just, I just wanted to make that abundantly clear, that that's an issue.
All right. And these are, this is part of the, you know, it's a give and take. When you're getting six million dollars, you're going by Mast Dot standards, and I think one of the reasons why this project originally was supposed to start at Metcalf Square and, and go all the way down, and one of the reasons it, it basically got cut in half was because Wentworth Street was unable to accommodate Mast Dot's requirements, so. And I mean, I think that's something that the town has to understand in the future if there's potential projects out there and you have to, I talked about this before, the projects getting into fruition instead of after it. I think we're going to now get, you know, we're getting to get a lot of work for, for a relatively small amount of money, and it's going to make, you know, substantially good improvements to the town in a lot of ways. But it is something, again, you have to think about as you're looking to accept money. Nothing's free. Everything is, that they say is free, there's always some cost to it, whether it be monetary or just quality of life. Were there any other questions for Andrew? And thank you so much, Andrew, for taking it. Vice President Ruggiero, last question.
Right back, and thank you, I appreciate it. Just, could you just recap the timeline? If everything goes according to plan, you're here tonight, see feedback from us, when do we break ground, and when is everything put back together? Because, Steve, as you know, construction is stressful for everyone involved, so if you could just.
Yep.
Couple months, you know?
Yeah. So, right now, we're in, we submitted our hundred percent design, the town has started to work on the right-of-way acquisition process. Appraisals have started, I believe. So, advertised for construction would be in June or July of the summer. It's, you know, one month, two month bidding process. Project probably won't break ground till maybe late fall, twenty twenty-three, likely spring, twenty twenty-four. And then, we're looking at an eighteen, twenty-four month construction period, so probably going to be wrapped up by the end of twenty twenty-five, could go into spring, twenty twenty-six.
All right. And I'll end it with just saying that obviously the major concern for the town, too, is to make sure that there's ease of entrance for the schools during school season and for DPW, and obviously funerals and such.
Yeah.
That's going to have to be maintained proper access for all that. Thank you, Andrew, for your time.
Okay, Council President, just one last thing. So, Andrew and his team, they did compile all the, all the questions that we, we sent him, he's answered them, it's in a, in a document. We'll certainly post that on the, on the town website, so people can get the answers to their, unless you wanted to go through specific, you know, questions, it'll be posted on, on the town.
Thank you. Thank you. And if you have some, you could pass it throughout the council for the councils reading after.
Uh, you want me to just leave this back here?
Yes, that would be great. With Denise, that would be fantastic. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I believe we have Peter Roach here.
Patrick.
Oh, Patrick, I'm sorry. Did I have him on there?
He wrote to Patrick.
Yeah.
Sure, he's a good guy.
He's a good guy. From Community Electricity Aggregation, and please, the floor is yours.
Great. Well, yeah, thank you very much for having me. So, my name is Patrick Roach, I'm with Good Energy. We are a consulting company that helps cities and towns run community electricity aggregation programs. So, you might have heard of this as municipal aggregation. We like to refer to it as community electricity aggregation, it's a little bit more clear what, what we're doing. So, I do have a presentation that, I don't know if we can pull that up on the screen, and I can run through that.
Yep.
One second.
Tony.
Tony's in Fiji right now.
With it. Bad.
It's excellent. Strange that he gave one shy of.
Want a bowl of soup?
God, I love small towns.
Yes.
Want a bowl of soup? That's hilarious.
Thank you very much. So, we can go to the, the next slide here.
Maybe. Can't get it there.
Great. So, just first, a little bit about us. So, we really specialize in managing these kind of programs for cities and towns, so we've got ten years of experience doing this. We started our first programs in Massachusetts in, our first one launched in twenty sixteen. We also have worked in Illinois, New York for, for longer. Right now, we have fifty cities and towns in Massachusetts that we work with, and some of those are fairly close by, so we just started working with Malden, we've worked with Melrose, Arlington, Somerville, Medford, for, going on for five years now. And all those communities on the map there are ones that we, we work with, so that also includes the communities like Quincy and Fall River, New Bedford, and kind of a whole array of different types of, of communities. And we launch many of these programs, sort of all these programs are specific to your community, but when we go to buy electricity, we group some communities together for extra buying power, so we operate the largest buying group in the state. Most of those communities on the south coast there are in one buying group, but then many of our other communities go out just on their own. So, that's a little bit of background for us. And so, just first, a little introduction to this. So, community electricity aggregation, here in Massachusetts, your electricity bill has two parts. We have the, the distribution side, which is the wires and the poles getting the power to you, and then there's the supply side. And those come together in the same bill, and the utility, National Grid, will always handle the distribution, but you have a choice over where you're, where you get your supply from. And most large consumers have made a choice to go out to the market and get their own supply, but most residential and small business customers haven't, largely because they don't have the buying power individually to get really great terms. And actually, you might have heard for a while, this is something the former Attorney General, Governor-elect, has been, has been railing against for years, is that customers in the private electricity market getting really bad deals. So, one of the reasons that these programs are attractive is it's really a chance to get the benefits of the competitive market that the largest electricity users get for your residents and, and small businesses. So, kind of just running through the, the goals here, we want to try to expand consumer choice for electricity supply, so all of the choices that you would have today, either to stay with the utility or go out and pick your own third-party supplier, would, would still be there, and then this would just be another, another option. Ideally, we're providing, let's say, advantageous and predictable rates, so we're trying to have competitive rates that we, ideally, we do have some savings against the utility, and we can, I can get into our track record on that. The one thing I have to say is we can't guarantee savings, because the utility's rate changes every six months, and we just, we just don't know with perfect certainty what that will be in the future, but our track record has been one for all of our clients of providing savings for them over their contract terms, and usually those are two- or three-year contracts with a fixed rate, so rather than a price that changes every six months, you have a fixed rate for a longer period of time. Also, talk a little bit about supporting clean energy, but you can do that in a few different ways through these programs, and expanding access to clean energy. You know, not everyone can put solar on their, their roof, so this, this program's a great way to do that. And as I mentioned, this is a town-vetted alternative, so for those people sort of looking for, you know, they're looking for choice but don't feel like they have the ability to go, you know, kind of vet terms and conditions, it's, it's the town with an expert consultant sort of managing that. And as we're seeing now, you know, markets are getting very volatile, so these, these predictable stable rates are helpful there, too. So, those are common goals, and when we, when we roll these, these programs out, what has become, I would say, most common is a, a product mix like, like this. So, the, there's one product, which we call product, but it would be your default. So, when the program rolls out, the way it works is it's an automatic enrollment program, so we'll talk about that process, but people who would be automatically enrolled would go into the default product. And then, we can offer other products, too, that you can, you can choose as an option if you wanted to affirmatively elect. So, what, what Malden's planning to do, what Melrose has been doing for years, same with Somerville and Arlington and many other communities, are, they have the standard product, which we call kind of a, a green standard product. We add a little bit extra renewable energy, and we're still trying to be cost-competitive with the utility. So, the idea is that it could kind of be a win-win for, for, for everybody. You're getting a little bit cleaner power, but hopefully also still getting some savings. And that when we add up across the entire community, that little bit of renewable energy in everybody's supply, it actually has a pretty big impact. It's a pretty big purchase. So, that's sort of the common standard product, and then you have a basic product where that just meets the state's minimum standards for renewable energy, so that would be the lowest-cost option in the program. And then, something like a one-hundred percent product for those people who want to use as much as they can. And generally, we're seeing communities choose, it's called Mass Class One renewables, which are renewables that are from New England, as opposed to, you know, like Texas Wind or something like that. And right now, we're up to, I think, a total of a hundred and fifty communities in the state that have approved these programs. As I said, we work with, we've got forty-five active, active programs, and, yeah, so that's just a little bit of context. There's a sort of a well-trodden path at, at this point. So, this is just a little bit of a, of a bill example of how this would work. So, there's a delivery section on the bill for National Grid, it has a lot of these different individual charges, things like energy efficiency and whatnot. Those won't change, that'll stay the same. So, then, the next slide shows the, the supply section. So, here, for most residential customers, if they look in their supply section, it's going to say supplier, National Grid, and basic service fixed. So, basic service is essentially what you're using if you haven't made your own choice. And when this program rolls out, customers who are on basic service, they'd be eligible for that automatic enrollment. If you're someone who's made your own choice for a supplier, you'd be, you'd be welcome to join, but you'd have to affirmatively choose to, to join. So, then if you go to the next slide, so in terms of how this rolls out for a participant, before the program launches, we have a education outreach period, that's a minimum of thirty days, so people can make a choice before it launches whether they want to be in or out. And if you don't opt out, then you would be automatically enrolled. And the nice thing is that once you are enrolled, if you wanted to, if you said, actually, I really, I realized, you know, day two, I don't want to be in this, you can opt out at any time, and there's no penalty or termination fee or anything like that. So, you can always opt out. And then, National Grid does continue to handle the billing and the maintenance and power outages. They don't make any money on the supply side of the bill, so this doesn't affect their, like, storm response or anything, that's all funded on the distribution side, so that doesn't affect that. And then, other things, like if you have solar on your roof and you're getting net metering credits, or you're on a budget billing program, or maybe you are on the low-income rate, which applies a discount to your whole bill, those also stay the same. So, what, what's really nice is that we're really not changing much. You actually, you really probably wouldn't notice much, because you're still getting the National Grid bill, it's just that supplier section that's changed. And the education outreach is one of the most important pieces of this, this whole thing. Certainly, doing the bidding to get a good rate is huge, but the education outreach is, is really a huge focus for us on this. So, the way this would roll out when we do, when it does launch. So the way this would roll out when we do, when it does launch, is at least 30 days before the program starts, every customer who's eligible for automatic enrollment would get a detailed letter that would explain what the rates are, when it would take effect, how to opt out, which would be you can call, you can go online, or there'll be a postage-paid card in there. You can just sign it and return. A few days before that, we'd like to send a postcard that is just like a, kind of a get-ready, the town has this electricity program, there's going to be more information coming, just so someone doesn't see it and throw it away. And then around that, both before and after, we work with you to do kind of a whole suite of other broader outreach mechanisms. So appearing at meetings like this, but press releases, social media, you know, interviews, videos we can record, flyers, you know, things like that, often a meeting with the council on aging directly. So trying to raise as much awareness as we can. And then again, if someone doesn't get the message and they don't want to participate, they can always, they can always opt out. So maybe the next slide, this just shows a little bit. When we roll this out, this is just a sample for Arlington. It's all municipally branded, so it's Town of Winthrop's program. You don't see us. The idea here is that we want people to know that this is a town program and not, you know, really separating it out from those other third-party offers and people are calling you and knocking on the door. So we would just, you know, design a suite of materials that are all with your brand and your messaging. And I just did a link to Melrose's program. If you wanted to take a look at that at some point, you can see, again, kind of what we've done for them. And I just wanted to walk through the process. So actually, before I start with that. So the way we, our goal is to effectively help you implement these programs without having to incur any new cost or, you know, staff time. So what we do is we get paid a per-kilowatt-hour fee in, from the supplier. So whatever supplier would win, we have the same per-kilowatt-hour fee, and we get included in the rate. So it doesn't have any impact on the municipal budget. And yes, our goal is really to be able to let you make all the key decisions and, you know, the input for how we talk to the community, how we reach them, what products we're going to offer, and then we go execute and make it all happen, and do the customer support and all that sort of stuff. So, yeah, this process starts with the town council authorizing it. There's a pretty standard authorization language. I think I have it on the next slide. You customize this slightly for your form of government. And that effectively kicks off the process. And what that does is it would allow the town manager to hire a consultant to work with the town and to start drafting your aggregation plan. So that's the kind of the key meat of this, is there's a plan that we have local approval and then ultimately state approval, and that governs how the program will operate. So what we would do is begin working with the town to develop that plan and put it out for public review. So the nice thing is with, you know, 150 other communities that have gone down this road, there's a pretty tried-and-true plan sort of out there. And what we really do is to work on it with you to customize it for those products, how we talk to the community, those sort of things. So that goes out for public review period. We also do a meeting with the Department of Energy Resources. That's called a consultation. And effectively, we then bring back a plan to you to approve, to say, hey, we put this plan out for public review, you know, maybe we tweaked it a bit based on that review. We've consulted with DOR. And then you'd have the opportunity to approve it and move it to the next step. But the nice thing with this process is you don't, you can always sort of, there are many stop points. So you could decide, we don't want to move forward with it at that point. But if you did, then we would be submitting it to the state, to the Department of Public Utilities. And that is the final approval process point. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, they've been taking a very long time, like one to two years, to review these. But we're hopeful with the new administration, and also there's just a lot of political pressure mounting because it's really just a kind of absurd amount of time, that that will be improving. And so once you do have your approval of that plan from DPU, then you're sort of just ready to go. Sometimes the market's in a great spot, and we say, yeah, we recommend going to bid, seeing what pricing we get. Other times, we'd say, you know, the market's not at the right point right now. We want to hold off, you know, for a couple of months or it could be longer. But we basically, we'll sort of see. And then you're never under obligation to accept a bid, so do the bids, see if the pricing's right. If it's not, that's no problem. And again, you could theoretically walk away at that point, and we would never get paid, and that's, and there would be no impact on the municipal budget. But if we do get a bid that is satisfactory, then the town would execute that, and we'd have a start date. We'd have prices, and we'd know our renewable energy content. And then effectively, we'd begin customizing all those education outreach materials and putting together, you know, the implement, getting ready to implement them ahead of that launch period. And so, yeah, we would be creating all those things with your approval, of course, and managing that process, managing the supplier, making sure that they're doing the enrollments properly. And then once the program's up and running, we're doing, we're kind of managing that supplier, making sure they're continuing to operate as they should, as customers want to get in and get out, that they're handling that correctly, reporting back to you how the program's going, and working with you, too, on things like opt-out campaigns to try to recruit people into, say, the 100% option or things like that. So I think, there might be one more slide, maybe? Oh, the sample resolution. You don't need to go through that, but that's there. And this is just, I just wanted to show you, this is Melrose. So this, the blue line is, I'm going to have to increase the font on this. That's the utility rate. Changes every six months. It's going up, it's going down. Yeah, as you guys probably know, the rates now are at an unprecedented level, up at 33 cents. So Melrose's default rate is the green line there. They have a little bit extra renewable energy in there. And generally, you can see in the winters, they've been beating the rate by quite a lot. In the summers, sometimes they're actually a little bit above it, and that's the sort of expected. The idea is we're trying to beat it overall and provide that stability. So they're well ahead, and certainly this winter, they'll be well ahead. But that's just sort of an example of how it could play out. And they're doing, they've done two different contracts. The first time, they had 5% extra renewable energy, and then they doubled that to 10% extra a couple of years ago. And they're locked in through the end of 2024 with the same rate. So, yeah, and then you can go to the last slide there.
I think that's it.
Oh, that's it. Great. So, yeah, thank you for having me, and I'd love to take any questions. And, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, Patrick, and we'll ask for questions in a second. We will, we hope to get more information from the town manager in one of our December meetings. Hopefully, get to the point where we could make an initial recommendation. But I will open it up for questions. Vice President, Mijer.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Sort of quick technical question, and then I'll just pass it along. But on the co-branded website, is that transactional? So would a resident be able to go in there and make a transaction or make a decision?
Yes, it is.
They would be, okay.
Yep, they can go on and they would submit an online form to, yeah, to enroll or to opt out.
Okay. So I just want to, we just need, one thing for consideration is just being clear that that's not a Town of Winthrop-run and operated website. That's a website operated by a third party. So if folks are giving personal information, making transactions on there, we just want to make sure that that co-branding is crystal clear from just honestly like a marketing and like a disclosure perspective. Obviously, I think there's a level of trust that comes with the co-brandedness, so that's a good thing. But we don't want, you know, our residents to think that they're doing something on our website. Their data's going to a private company, and so I think that's important. I don't think we have the overhead here at Town Hall to manage that website either. So there's going to have to be something there that's just kind of fireflies this.
Yeah, no, it's a great point. And I think data protection is huge with this, right? We are managing customers' account information. So that's just, that's a core part of what we do, to protect that data and make sure that it's used by the supplier for purposes of running this program and that they're not allowed to use it for other marketing purposes.
And if the website breaks, right, it's, you're not requesting, you know, Denise here to fix that for you. You're going to you all to do it. Right, okay. And that's, those are things that we just need to be crystal clear on.
Yep.
Thank you.
Council Flockhart.
I'd like some questions on the timing here. How long do you think it would take from the time we say, okay, we're going to, the council says, okay, we're going to go with this, till you get to the point where you're going to the department, the State Department of Public Utilities?
Yeah, I think with, when you said to go for it, I think to get to the point where we then see, submitting to DPU, I think we could, I think, you know, three months is reasonable. It all depends, how quickly you want to work. But there's a 30-day public review period, so we'd have, you know, there's at least a month there. And then we usually would probably spend a couple of weeks to a month ahead of time customizing that plan, getting it ready for review. And then there's the kind of approval time on the backend there. So, and the way we, I would say also that the way these plans are built is they're kind of built to be a framework. They're not trying to lock you into every decision that you're going to do for how you implement this plan, but trying to give you the flexibility to say, we intend to operate it this way, which allows us, because ideally, you don't want to have to go back to DPU for every possible change you want to make, right? You want to make those here. So, yeah, so I would say that it's something, you can move through that plan development process fairly efficiently.
And then you're saying that it's been taking the DPU a year or two to approve it?
Yes.
And then after they approve it, how long from then until we start the education process?
From, so once they have approval, usually what we look at is sort of 90 days from starting the bidding process to launch. So there's at least got to be that, you know, we want to have the bid out there for probably 30 days. We want to have maybe another 30 days to get all the materials ready and everything just really ready to go, and then we'd launch that 30-day opt-out period. So it's another 90 days usually from there.
And then from that point until it's actually running?
Oh, then it would be like up and running at the end of that 90 days.
Oh, okay. All right. And I have another question. What happens to the people who are already on 100% renewable energy through another supplier?
Yep. Nothing would happen to them. They'd be able to join the program if they wanted to. We always would just kind of caution them to check if there's any, like, termination penalties before they join, but they'd be able to come into the program whenever if they'd like.
And with the same thing, 100% renewable energy?
Yeah, yeah, we'd have an option for them. Yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Councila Ella.
So when you get the bids in there for a multiple-year period, typically, you may have said like three to five years or something like that.
Yeah, usually, usually the most common we see now are two- to three-year fixed terms. You can go a little bit, there's no hard minimum or maximum, but usually two to three is what's been most common. But we get bids for shorter periods of time and a little bit longer, too.
So I'm looking at the point when that deal expires and you have to go back to the market. What's the responsibility or rights of the town at that point because of the potential that markets can change pretty dramatically over, let's say, two bid periods or three bid periods or whatever? But how should a town think about its sort of rights and obligations for the second and third bids?
We usually start conversations with the town about renewing at least a year out. So, you know, you could decide, we're just going to let this program end at the end of the term. But all of our clients so far have chosen to renew. So then it's a question of start making decisions about what do we want this next contract to look like? Maybe, do we keep the same renewable amounts? Do we keep the same options? Do we want to change that? And then what we also like to do is try, we start as early as possible so that you're not backed into a corner if your contract's expiring, and then, you know, it's either take whatever the market has there or the program ends. So we're often, if a program is, if a contract's ending in December, we're often, you know, in the springtime, we're starting to look to see if there's good opportunities.
And you mentioned, last question, you mentioned that we're one of the smaller towns. So do you try to put us in the same cycle where you're bidding on behalf of multiple municipalities at the same time so we're getting benefit of scale?
Yeah, what we do is when you're through the Department of Public Utilities process, we could kind of look around to see, okay, for existing clients, do we have some that are about to go back out to bid themselves? Do we have any new ones who are moving forward in the same timeline? And then we could kind of bring that option to you, would you like to go out to bid together? And the nice thing with that is it's still your program, your product options, just that we are getting that economy of scale. So it's not required. We have a lot of uptown, some small towns that go out to bid on their own, but that scale can be helpful.
Thank you. Council Demakor.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Thank you.
Council Belcher.
Thank you for this. I think this is a really important thing to think about, especially in a coastal community where climate resiliency is super important. I just want to check my understanding that I understand you can't guarantee the savings to the ratepayers, but stability is what we're able to guarantee, right?
Yes, but also to be totally honest, there are things like changes in law. So say the state, and the state does this occasionally, they increase their renewable portfolio standard, the minimum requirements for renewable energy. If we had a three-year contract and halfway through they passed a new law to increase that, then we might have a change in law situation where we would work to negotiate a reasonable change to reflect that new law. But yes, outside of that, price stability is a key component of this program. And so far, savings with that default product has been something we've been able to deliver, but not guarantee.
I think that's excellent, especially looking at the crazy increase in the price of electricity that people weren't expecting. And just also, where does the cost for the town come in and what is that?
So really, it would, really, yeah, there shouldn't be any budgetary implication. We work with a whole different kind of, I guess, suite of communities. Some have an energy manager who we're working with, but most don't. So we're working with the town manager or a town administrator. And, you know, there are periods of time where we need, we need some of their time to make these key decisions around bidding and around the education outreach, but we really try to keep that as minimal as possible. So I think we've got a very good track record of doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Council Muntz.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Patrick, for a presentation. It was, it's quite timely that you're presenting in front of us with this recent spike in prices. So it does feel like you're coming in at the right time. I am just a little bit curious about a few things. I understand the benefits of savings and predictability and also possibly being greener. So those are all three very good things. But I'm just wondering if you could just explain to me. So they're still the same suppliers. All the same suppliers are still supplying the same energy. So you're basically an aggregator, trying to get a buying power to be able to reduce prices. But what ultimately are you going to look like to people outside of our education, the public outreach? Are you basically just another supplier on the electric bill that individuals can choose? Or is this going to be more of like, once we make our just choices, this is the plan and that's it? I mean, there still has to be that freedom of choice to the end user.
Yep. Yeah, no, it's a good question. So say you had those three product options that we had up there. So those would be available to anyone in Winthrop. And then they could also have all the options that they have today for all those other third-party suppliers. And they could also have the option to stay with the utility. So, yeah, all those would stay there. And, yeah, and effectively, we are, you know, we're aggregating all of these accounts in town together to become kind of like a large commercial buyer. But some people, you know, would say, well, you can't be bigger than the utility. So how are you going to beat their pricing? And the reason we can, we achieve scale, but it's not as big as them. But they are locked into a procurement schedule. They have to buy two times a year, basically on the same two days every year, and they can only, they have to buy for the same period of time. So if it's a bad market, they can't avoid it. If it's a good market, they can't lock in for a while. So our real strength is taking that buying power and combining it with choosing when and for how long to lock in.
So could you give us some rough ideas as the typical savings off of the price point compared to a National Grid supply price?
Yeah, so, maybe, you know, depends on your, your typical bill, for example, but maybe a typical residential customer, they might be saving somewhere, it's not huge money, maybe around, you know, maybe it's fifty dollars a year, something like that. And again, this can really depend on what, like this year, with the national grid rates this winter, it's going to be a lot, lot higher of the savings there. But I think that's why you often see communities combine this, they are looking for the stability, it's like, yeah, a little bit of price savings, but they are also combining it with a little bit of extra renewable energy, because it's kind, it's one of those rare opportunities to, to not have to pay more to do something that's pretty impactful for the environment.
So, there's no percentage that you would say that we, you typically kind of get a ten percent discount? So far and historically, you could come back and say, this is what's average is out to be our savings?
Yeah, I, you know, I just don't have that percentage off the top of my head, but there, I guess we could calculate one. Yeah, it's tended to be, yeah.
And I, I do leak, I, I am a little bit worried about the co-branding as well, 'cause while you're asking the town council for permission to present yourself as another line item on everyone's electric bill, it does feel like you're borrowing the trust of the, the town municipality to be able to offer yourself a commercial opportunity. So, it would, and then we actually don't do any of the customer service, we basically leave that to you. So, it does seem like that would need to be clearly defined, and so we're just giving people another good opportunity for another option, as opposed to actually saying, this is our thing.
Well, you know, I think that's super important, what you said there, but I, I guess I do wanna maybe just clarify, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily refer to it as co-branding, 'cause you don't see us at all in terms of, what, the idea is that you, you, you have hired us as a service provider for the, for the town, and we are running, you know, your program for, for you. So, the idea really is, you know, that when that mailer goes out, it's, it's coming from the town of Winthrop, and, and we've, we're, we're executing your plan, you know, as, as you've, you've made those decisions. So, we, yeah, we are really in the, in the background just supporting, but it might be a minor point, but.
Thank you, Patrick.
Sure.
Council, Fusillo?
No questions. Thank you.
Council, Honer?
Nope, thank you.
Well, we thank you so much for taking the time, and we hope to have this in front of us next month so we could take action on it.
Great, no, thank you very much, I appreciate your questions.
And we would hope that this presentation, will this be on the website?
We can put it on the website.
Yeah, if we could put this on the website, too.
Yeah, thanks.
Great, yeah, thank you very much for having me here.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
And we're gonna have two rounds of public comment. The first one is now. Yes?
I'm ready.
Go.
Do I just stand here?
You can if you'd like.
Okay.
Name and precinct.
Name and precinct?
Oh, Betty Paving, precinct four. So, my, this is all about vandalism in the parks. Steve, I didn't call you on this last one?
Tire, tire, tire rats?
Yeah, I called the police on Sunday morning. I walked up on my normal Sunday, uh, day, daily walk. Beautiful park, the DPW did a gorgeous job, they cut the grass, it's beautiful, it's peaceful, and there's tire tracks like all through the, through the park. The vandalism that, that goes on there is ongoing, it's been my entire life, not my entire life. It, it's just, it's just so devastating to, to go up there and see things like trash and glass and condoms and Tampax and, and, and people sleeping up there overnight, and I'm like, what is going on here? It's because it's a, it's a, it's an isolated park even though there was lots of people around?
I'm sorry, are we talking Pond Street?
We're talking Hanover.
Hanover.
Hanover, okay, okay.
Yeah, Pond Street, none of them. I take care of that. But, 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 you know, the dumping, the drinking, I had to make notes. Dog park, people using it as a dog park, I'm like, we have a dog park, get your dog out of here, you know, I mean, put it on a leash, it's biting me, it's pooping, it's, and I'm sorry I'm being so, so.
Graphic.
Graphic, thank you, but this is what happens. This is what happens, and I, on Sunday, I'm glad you didn't see me on Sunday because I was just like out of my mind. And, uh, people sleeping in cars overnight, and I've called the police. Recently, there was an Uber guy up there for like three days, sleeping there, overnight. It, it's our neighborhood, it's a gorgeous park, we have lovely park areas in this town, and that's what makes a town nice, our parks and open spaces, and we have beautiful ocean and we have beautiful harbors and, and Belle Isle Marsh, we have all these beautiful things to look at, and then you, you know, and, and, and the DPW does a nice job keeping it up, and then, so what I'm saying is, what else do I wanna say? People walk up there, they bike up there, they meditate up there, and I think, you know, I'm an advocate, like a citizen advocate, of, of our beautiful parks and beautiful town, but I also think we need to have like a, a, a town app, like a, from a higher power advocate, to make sure that these things, that our parks and our open spaces and our green spaces stay beautiful. So, for a time, there was a, a chain link fence, a chain link gate that kept people out at night from driving up there. There is no reason to be up there at ten o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night. There's no, there's nothing up there except to destroy stuff. So, the, the, it was driven through and the, and the chain link fence was, the chain link gate was never replaced. I, I would advocate for doing something to keep people out at night. You go to DCR, the DCR has a gate, you go to any nice places where there are beautiful parks, there's a gate, no, you know, you can't go up there at night, or at dusk, or, you know, you can't drive up there anyway. I don't know, I, I mean, I, this has been an ongoing thing, you know, I've called the police, I called the DPW, I've been here many times, not recently, but I'm back. I'm back. You know, Pat, I don't know, I just don't think there's any excuses for not keeping our parks nice, especially, I don't know, especially even beautiful views. People need that, people need a place to go and be still. And, you know, when I walked up there on Sunday and I saw those, I was just like, come on. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the town, I'm asking the police department, I'm asking you, you all to advocate or do something to keep that, that and all parks safe. But the thing about Pond, uh, Hanover is that it is isolated, even though there's lots of people around, it's very isolated. And I hear about neighbors telling me all kinds of things, you know, people driving up there, and I hear people from Seal Harbor saying that they hear all kinds of people up there, you know, and, you know. So, I don't know if I got everything, this was very quick tonight, but I, I, I'm just very, um.
No, we, we appreciate your passion.
Yeah, passion, that's what I want, I'm like, what am I, tired, yes, passionate, yes.
We appreciate your passion, and we could do better, and we will look into what we can do.
I really, 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 this is like rough from my heart, you know, I mean, this is really important.
Thank you.
I sent pictures to you guys, and I sent pictures. Yeah, and that was just, I was just like, so, I don't wanna keep everyone here, but.
Thank you, better.
You're welcome.
Public comment?
Yes.
Yes, I'm s-
Whoever, you, Lisa, go.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Karina Campavasso from precinct three, Hannas precinct. I was, just wanted to mention that, and I'm with Mothers Out Front, as you can see, we strongly support the idea of community aggregation, that's why we sort of facilitated Patrick's presentation here tonight. I was on the Energy Committee, maybe some people remember it back about five years ago, with Frank Nitti, does anyone remember Frank Nitti? He actually brought Patrick in to meet with the Energy Committee, and Carol Walker was also on that committee at the time, to talk about community aggregation, and we were all very interested in it. And then Frank got, I guess, pulled into other projects, we did the Solarize project, which unfortunately, we didn't get too many takers on that, but, so our attention was on, focused on that and not on the community aggregation. So, when, I just thought it would be something that we should, that you all should consider again, and of course, we would all obviously advocate for the highest level of, of renewable energy in, in the contract that we can get, but of course, that's, that's something that you all have to decide, so that's all.
And we appreciate you facilitating Patrick to get here, too. It was, you know, we've heard nothing but good things, and hopefully we could act on this in December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments still? Yes?
So, hello, I'm Karen Langley, I've never spoken here before, my first time.
That's okay. Welcome.
Welcome to the party.
I think I'm precinct one.
Okay.
So, I, I'm a volunteer with Bike Winthrop, and we ran the recent Halloween Bike Ride, and we had, just to give you some numbers, we had, we tagged all the kids that participated in the Halloween costumes. We know we had over a hundred children, and we're estimating, we had, if you add in the parents, we had about three hundred participants, add in some siblings, a number grows. We had approximately three hundred participants in our Bike Winthrop, our fifth annual Bike Winthrop Halloween Bike Ride. I know, it was fun, but, you know, in light of, you know, recent bike lanes discussions, so we wanted to, we set up a table, and we asked the folks that participated to fill out the postcard, which you're getting handed to you also have in your email as well. Some of them are colorful, some of them are just drawn on by a two-year-old, but they are, but basically, we asked our participants, first, how do you ride, as in how do you ride in Winthrop, and how would you like to use your streets, emphasis on the word your?
Oh, yes.
And we just left it at that, nothing else, nothing, no additional, nothing like that. And so, these are the postcards that we got back, we got just under eighty postcards back, and there's some pictures like on stuff in there, too, you can see some of the kids in the Halloween costumes, but some of them are just, you know, a heart symbol, and some of them are, I like to ride with my mom, my, my nine-year-old son wrote that one, he likes to ride down to your island. So, this is just to show some of the feedback, citizen feedback that we got at our Halloween Bike Ride event. I led the bike ride this year, it went through both, both seminars, I believe, and it was poopy, so that's all I have to say about that. And then, of course, we wanted to thank everybody that helped out with it. I'm gonna, Kim is my co-president, I'm gonna read the names and hope sure I don't butcher anyone's name, please forgive me, but we had Parks and Rec, Winthrop Police Department, DJ Cruzy, Epic FKO, Winthrop Marketplace, Ace, Lantern Residential, The Book, Book Depot and Cafe, Best Coffee in Town, Winthrop, we had a lot of Winthrop High School volunteers, and then most importantly, a lot of people at these tables bought the pizza, so I just wanna say in general, thank you very much for the pizza, because it was a big hit. So, yeah, so very much so, thank you, and all the folks involved in town for making our fifth annual Halloween Bike Ride a success, and then we're having, we're having our second annual Solstice Winter Holiday Lights Ride in December. We're hoping to see folks there, if you choose to do so, hopefully they'll be part some delicious hot cider, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You can find information about our summer Solstice Ride, which will be in late December, hopefully on the Solstice, which would be the twenty-first, I'm not gonna commit to that, but we have a Bike Winthrop Facebook page, and then hopefully eventually, a independent webpage is followed, we're not quite there yet, so that, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Turned pictures.
Good job, it's your first time, yeah. Good job.
If anybody has a card that says Ella on it, I would love to see it, because she did.
Public, yes?
Hi, I'm Sarah Jane Fornes, I'm precinct six, and also Bike Winthrop co-organizer, so thank you again. I wanted to speak to the Revere Street project this evening. Personally, I appreciate that we're applying for grants in the first place, and I appreciate that the funding comes with conditions like bike lanes, as you can see, there's a lot of people here that use bikes, and are pedestrians and scooters, who are just not necessarily in a car all the time. And, so I appreciate that the funding comes with these conditions, and like bike lanes, smaller intersections and narrower roads. These guidelines were established by professionals, planners, who have studied and understand the implications of growing cities, and I'm towns and I trust them. I'm really looking forward to the Revere Street updates. I personally use Revere Street on a daily basis, I live on Summit Ave, and so I have to walk my kid to school every morning and cross Revere Street, and it's a very wide road. I understand that you've heard complaints about not having parking spaces along Revere Street, I'm not understanding really where the loss of net parking comes from, because when you look at Revere Street, there's not many people parked there anyways, and so it's just this very wide road that, you know, pedestrians have to navigate and dodge cars on. So, I appreciate you've heard about parking, I'm not understanding where the net loss is. I, I really look forward to the improvements, and I think in general, if, just my opinion, if we are confronting issues with funding that we're not really sure if it aligns with our goals as a town, it might be an interesting thing to consider a master plan at some point, because Revere Street's a main artery, you know, this, these projects that are coming along affects some pretty important parts in our town, and I think, you know, also given the changes that happen in any city, it's not just Winthrop or any town, you know, we're right next to Boston, it's growing, maybe it's time to consider a cohesive plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, yes?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I get a second chance, but I just wanted to quickly mention that Win, that Mothers Out Front, Winthrop, is having its second annual pumpkin drop on November nineteenth at the Mormon School Hill. Our last year's event was a fantastic success, the kids had a blast rolling their pumpkins down the hill, so it's from ten to one on Saturday, and if anyone has any old pumpkins, they can't make the pumpkin drop, but have old pumpkin that they wanna compost, because part of the purpose of this event is to reduce the solid waste in the town of Winthrop, which we are paying so much money for by advertising composting. If anyone has a pumpkin that they are ready to dispose of but do not wanna put it into the waste stream, you can drop it off at my house, seven ninety-five Shirley Street, put it in the backyard, and we will make sure that the kids will have fun rolling it down the hill.
Yeah, that's a good reason.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
It's the same, black earth, composting.
They care about.
Any other public comments? Yes?
I'm Pig Lions, I live in precinct two, and I work in precinct four, and just have a couple short things to present. One, we understand it's extremely important that we work together to get this TIPS project completed. One of the questions I've been asked to ask is that, is there a mass DOT deadline on securing the easements on this project, and how will the easements be funded? Earlier this week, I was informed that there was a little wiggle room for some slight design changes tonight, it was clear that, that design changes are not an option unless, so, so, so that the project, otherwise the project will be shut down. There are a couple things in the project, for example, one of the permanent easements is for location for a new bus stop, and it's my understanding with the new bus changes that that bus stop doesn't exist any longer, so is there any wiggle room at all in, in, for slight changes at that location? And then the other, the other thing I wanted to talk about, you mentioned that forty-seven trees will be taken down, and the Housing Authority would like to partner in the replacement of those trees, even if it's on the Housing Authority side of the property, because we think it's extremely important to keep greenery in that part of town. You know, we're endorsing, to the extent that we can, and, and, and we're working with the state so they can sign off on this as well, you know, for our piece of this, but we have some concerns about the safety, which have already been expressed, but we don't wanna do anything that's prohibited and pleased, because we ask questions, doesn't mean that we're against the project, it means we're looking for clarification on some of the details that were recently presented to us.
Thank you. And just for clarification, if people on TV might have thought you said forty-seven trees, 'cause I almost did, it's four-two-seven trees, not forty-seven trees.
I heard that first.
I heard that, too, I was like, whoa.
I just wanted to make that clarification, and I think that what was said relayed to us tonight was significant changes, like, you know, significant changes are not going to be. to be altered. The number of trees might be like, Day had said earlier, that, you know, they put in for 20. They're hoping to get 20. They might get 30. They might get 19. So, I mean, I think there'll be some minor changes. I don't think there'll be significant changes. And in terms of the, and the easements, I believe there is a time schedule on the easements.
There is. So we can't submit 100% design until the easements and right of ways are established. The funding for the easements is, comes from the town.
And that's it. And we'll get answers to your questions, too, especially on the, on the bus stop there. Thank you. And Frank?
Good evening, town council. Just to wrap up.
Frank Costantino.
Frank Costantino, precinct two. Just to comment about, my wife and I go up to Hannaford Park quite a bit. In fact, I remember working with Mr. Hannaford when he was a town employee many years ago. So, Art is happy name. But the fact that we're having, you know, this creeping vandalism, and unsavory behavioral littering, et cetera, you know, it's a, it's sort of like a, an illness that's gonna creep in. And it's gonna go within circles of people that aren't necessarily savory, or have any public sentiment in how they use open spaces like this. But I think it's very important that, you know, the town, either authorized by the council, or Steve with the DPW, or Terry at the police station, you know, they should be monitored. And anybody that is seen, you know, abusing the place, should be brought to bed. The other question is whether or not the neighbors, you know, are keeping an eye on this, and have an opportunity like they, you know, to keep track of what's happening up there, also to prevent this kind of behavior. Because it is a beautiful space, and it is something that people look forward to. People won't go up there if they know that there's gonna be drugs, there's gonna be people, you know, abusing it, taking their cars up there, and, you know, doing all kinds of unsavory behavior. Relative to the project that's going on, the TIPS project, and going up and down the B Street, just to give you a little bit of background, my training is in architecture and design, and architectural illustration. And I've worked on numerous projects, dealing with engineering issues, dealing with roadways, dealing with numerous buildings of all kinds all over the country. Recently worked with the, a team of planners, landscape architects, designers, and other agencies, the DCR being one of them, Charles River Conservancy being another one, the Escalade Association being another, and also neighborhood groups in and around two different places on the Charles River, which I've explained. One was on the Escalade project, which covered quite a bit of ground, dealing with 17 different locations, going from the Science Museum all the way up to the, all the way up to the, one of the footbridges on, on the crossing over to Cambridge. But the point is, is that what I do, besides working in terms of design, trying to be cognizant of the various players that are involved in these kinds of uses, I put together the illustrations that people can understand, you know, what these, what these projected changes are all about, how they can visualize and connect with what changes are coming in. When I see the documents for the engineering, the engineering documents from CHA, for the kinds of changes which are substantial along the corridor of Revere Street, they're in the service to not provide some kind of visual imagery that shows from the east corner, up in a couple of places up the hill, a couple of places down the hill, and down to the middle of the section of Revere and Crest Ave, not having views, three-dimensional views that the public can understand. The, you know, looking at the engineering drawings for most of the public, it's like looking at courts and looking at, you know, black holes, right? I mean, they don't really get it. They don't understand what it is. Peg has informed me about some of the tree-taking, which is rather concerned mine, as far as the green space of the town is concerned, and some of the 100-year-old trees that are along that corridor, and the fact that they're gonna be taken down and change the whole look, the whole appearance of Revere Street itself, in addition to the land-taking that has to be taken on the other side from some of the homeowners. So in creating this kind of boulevard, which in turn allows for the combined uses of bike and auto, and any kind of safety issues that are involved relative to the inclines in, up and down Revere Street, it seems to me that there's some serious safety issues that are at risk here. The intrusion into the senior housing and the property along that whole edge of Revere Street, I think is also something that hasn't been thought about all that carefully, and at the expense of the trees that do provide a safe haven, if you will, for all the elderly that are living here right now. I understand the issue of the parents, you can take their kids to school. We have, you know, parents that are, you know, driving, you know, 2,000-pound cars to, you know, take their three, four, five-year-old kids to school, okay, as opposed to taking bikes. So, you know, I don't know if that's gonna be, if expanding Revere Street is just basically gonna eventually prompt more congestion and more difficulties. And there's also a question of speeding, that, you know, people going up and down that hill, you know. Increasingly, from my observation, people are speeding much more regularly through town than they have been in the past. So it's a question of policing, not only during the times of the, of the school hours in and out, but also just on a regular basis. The speeding of automobiles becomes a huge risk for the bicyclists in town. And I don't know if these bike events are typical of the everyday uses of bicyclists, bicyclists, bikers, okay, that, you know, going throughout the town itself, and particularly on Revere Street. Has there been any, you know, survey to see, well, how many people during the course of a day, or a week, or two months, or whatever it is, you know, used Revere Street on their bike up and down? And, you know, to justify bike lanes, right, and the whole issue of bike lanes, and the monies that are, that are coming from mass DOT, you know, that becomes a big, that becomes a major concern for this multi-million dollar project. The other, the other issue, getting back to DOT, is that I also worked on the Austin Depot Land League project, which is up where Harvard did some land-taking, or purchasing, actually, when the chemical company went out of there. And it's also at the interchange between Stowe Drive and Mass Pike going west, and how Mass Pike wants to rebuild that old overpass up there. I worked with a team of designers that eventually came up with a compromise plan to be able to use larger landscape areas and open space to get to the edge of the Charles River and establish connections that would, then in turn, enhance the traffic that's going to the new West Station, which is part of the communal rail system, and put together imagery that was then presented to Stephanie Pollak, who was in charge of DOT at the time, she's now, you know, Secretary of Transportation of Washington, DC. But the fact is, is that the hybrid scheme that we proposed in the use of open space was something that, you know, was accepted by DOT, and they redirected their whole approach to how they were gonna think about the realignment of the Mass Pike. The point is, is that, you know, there are other aspects to this that I think, you know, maybe could be a little more sensitive to the community and the kinds of uses that are going on, as well as the necessities for safety. So I'm, I'm just asking for, you know, the, you can't really fast-track this process, and I know there's a deadline that's coming up, you know, that, you know, maybe, you know, just for the point of getting more public input, getting more, you know, addressing more of the concerns that Peggy is bringing about, you know, I think those are very serious concerns. We also have to think about the sort of spatial envelope that Revere Street represents. And that's something that, you know, we have spatial envelopes throughout the town. We all have perceptions of what Thornton Park is like, or what Court Road is like, okay? Revere Street is a major corridor. It has a certain appeal, part of that appeal is because of the trees that are on the senior housing side, and the way that people on the other side are keeping up their houses. So if we take more land from them, and, you know, diminish open space, you know, and just give it over to pavement and traffic, you know, I think that's a visual disaster.
Thank you.
So, anyway, thank you.
Council president, can I ask a quick question for clarification?
Excuse me? Hold on.
Can I address a few?
DPW joint.
Yes. Just wanted, just a couple of points.
Clarification.
Thank you for your, for your input. So the project's not proposing to, to eliminate 100-year-old trees. The seven trees that it is proposing to eliminate are two-to-four caliper trees in that grass strip, in the area where that grass strip is gonna be narrowed. The grass strip is gonna be, is gonna remain. It's not being removed entirely. The one large diameter tree, which I would say large, is about a 12-inch caliper tree at Locust Street. I love the idea that the housing director, Peg, wants trees on her property. We're looking for places to put, to put trees. So we could take credit for a street tree within 12 feet of the town's property. So we would love to line that behind the guardrail or behind the fence with trees to create a barricade, if that's the concern, you know, for safety, you know, additional buffer zone. We did do a survey on, on, on the bike usage on that, on that street. The average is, is five bikes per hour. That is in the memo that will be posted on the town web, that survey, those.
That recently?
Those.
Was that recently, Steve?
I'm sorry?
Was that done recently, that survey?
That survey, the survey was actually done at the onset of the project. The counts were from 2018. So, but that's when the design was initiated. So a lot of the answers, I think, to your concerns are in this document, which will be posted on the town website. But there is no 100-year-old.
We're not gonna get into back and forth, though, now. So there's no, there's no.
I just wanted.
No, no, no. And I appreciate.
The last point, though, is why not, why not ask for the town's benefit, the public's benefit, as well as a service, you know, extended service of what Steve is doing, to have three-dimensional representation of what this thing is gonna look like. It's very, very important.
This is not a project that started six months ago. This started many years ago.
I understand. But CHA has the skills to do this.
Yes, Jack?
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Jack, precinct one. Frank, I do appreciate everything that you said tonight about the corridor of Revere Street. I'm looking at this picture, I don't know who drew it, of a tree, a bus, a bike, and a car. Everything's very important here. There was a discussion a couple of years ago in this room concerning, the first proposed bike lane in the history of the town of Winthrop. And the bike lane was proposed to be on Veterans Road, running from north to south. That's the golf course side, going from the Highland Section to Shirley Street.
Expedal.
Yeah, no, further down.
Other way to.
Pleasure Street. It was discussed wildly for a couple of hours in this room. And it was determined that it wasn't a very good idea. All the car doors open on Veterans Road, there's tractor trailers, there's gas trucks, there's every kind of vehicle in existence going down that road. And every time a car door would open, you'd be in jeopardy of getting killed. So that proposal was dropped, after a few nights of discussion. This proposal is similar to that proposal that was put down three years ago here. I've been biking in Winthrop for fun and for necessity my whole life. I know how to get from Midcar Square to Shore Drive in three and a half minutes, not using any type of bike share row. As far as I'm concerned, the share rows give, I think, people, especially younger people, a false sense of security. They think they're gonna be safe going down a street competing with 2,000-pound automobiles. Eventually, the automobile wins. There's no question about it. I went, I went to court and told the judge, I'm not gonna be on this jury because I don't believe bikes should be sharing space with cars if it's detrimental to the bike, the biker. And the judge dismissed me. A very simple equation, very simple logic to that judge. I wasn't sick. Going down Revere Street, the hill, some unknowledgeable bikers would pick up speed. It's very congested. The school, the park, you have trees, you have, well, Frank took my page, a lot of things happening on that road. Thank you very much, Dave. I don't think it's a safe option. I hope that you will think it's not a safe option, children, any type of biker. I see bikers, now that they have the share rows, really competing with cars and buses and trucks to get ahead on corners. People go, you know, the bikes go really fast, so need fuel. But, but I, I, I work in Winthrop, I lived in Winthrop my whole life. I see what's happening with the situation. And good luck to the biker that wants to compete with a truck, or a bus, or a car door open. If he wants to beat me to the corner, he can have it. I just stop and let the gentleman go. I go slow. A lot of people are not like that. A lot of people, as Frank alluded to, go very fast. I go very slow. But there are people that go around me at 50 miles an hour when leaving Winthrop on your road over there, Mr. Demaco, that needs to be fixed. I hope you say something about it at some point.
We could wrap it up, Jack. Please.
I wish you would be so impatient with everybody here, because this is how we fought.
I'm just going by the three minutes.
When only one person was commenting, Jim.
Jack, I'm just asking to keep it to three minutes, please.
Thank you. With that, Jim, I'll wrap it up.
Any other public comment?
Well, I think I'd just like to say about the trees.
If you could state your name and precinct.
Carol Walker, precinct five. And I hope that when they get some trees, they can get trees that are, are not little tiny trees, but they can get bigger ones. So, because it's a lot better for the environment if they're not all, you know, if there's any way to get, to get a, you know, bigger, not, not tiny ones, so.
Thank you. All right. Going back, just for clarification, a public hearing that was scheduled is continued until the next meeting. Correspondence, Denise?
I received no correspondence. I'm sorry.
Committee reports, Rules and Ordinance, Vice President Magiera.
Thank you, Council President. Rules and ordinance met last night to discuss CBD parking. This was the second meeting that we had on this topic. The, the meeting included myself, Councillor Spelter, Town Council President Letiary, Councillor Aiello, and Councillor Demaco. We were also joined by Betsy Shane from the Chamber of Commerce, and a variety of business owners. We, you know, after, after a lot of thought and discussion, we came to the conclusion, this council did, after we had voted on to where to strike the lines, that there needed to be some timing restrictions in Winthrop Center. It's a busier area. There is a net loss of spots there. There are, it's, it's, it's new in a lot of ways, but at the same time, there were parking restrictions there prior to construction. So there's a motion that was submitted from Rules and Ordinance to this council. It's all in your emails. We will not be taking it up tonight, but I'm gonna ask the clerk and the council president to post a public hearing for our next meeting, and we can bring it to a vote, and we can discuss the nuts and bolts of it there. But ultimately, it's suggesting timing restrictions in the center business district area. This is consistent with the MAPC recommendation that was recommended prior to the construction in that, in that space. So coupled with that, we also took up and discussed a municipal lot ordinance, which will, I think, correspond very nicely with the timing restrictions that we're recommending on the street. So I will also ask if we can post a public hearing at our next meeting on the municipal lot ordinance. The Rules and Ordinance's subcommittee will try to meet between now and our next meeting, so that we can vote and discuss both of them together. But holidays, schedules, we'll see what we can do. But we're gonna really try to get something on the books in between now and our December meeting.
Thank you very much. And since you're up, you might as well continue with appointments, commissions, and committees.
The Appointments, Commissions, and Committees Committee met this evening, and we scratched the tip of the iceberg on the committee handbook. This is something that this council took up a few years ago, and was never completely ratified. We agreed tonight to take a fresh set of eyes on it, go through page by page, and come forth with a recommendation that is substantial, helpful, and, say, clear. Right now, there's a lot of material in that handbook that has been copy-pasted, has been added, has been removed. There's a few different versions on our website. So we're gonna start fresh and bring something forward to this council to debate, and hopefully, vote on. This is a much larger undertaking than, I think, originally meets the eye. I think my committee members might agree there. So we're gonna continue to work on it and get something in front of us in due time.
Thank you. Now, managers report. Town manager's out of state. We are very fortunate to have Director Calla as the interim, as the town manager's out. But the town manager has also joined us via Zoom, and it seems like a much better weather setting than we are having here. But we, we await his report anxiously.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I just want to update the council. As we talked about, we have the new chief managing officer of the position. I just want to update the council. As we talked about, we have the new Chief Financial Officer position now advertised. That'll close the big, the.
Oh, we lost you.
Would you get some really qualified candidates? I, oh, I'm sorry?
Nope.
I'm sorry. So John Peffer from Community Paradise will be at the job description, and that's on the street now, being advertised, and sent out to all related parties. Update on the trash rakes. I know we have a pretty solid draft put together now. Counselor Honan and Vice President Mujero are going to be on Thursday to get together on that and finalize a couple of last-minute questions and get a draft ready for the council hopefully by next meeting. Ferry update. As everyone knows, the ferry has been down for the last couple of weeks. We had some engine issues. We had towed out today. Up to Newburyport work for repairs. That's going to probably require one new engine, so we'll get pricing on that now. But that means the ferry will be down for the remainder of this season. But we hope to get it back up and running, and we will have it back up and running and ready to go by March. With the engines up and, in transmissions and full repair, like I said, it's up in Newburyport now. We did put an RFP off Legal Services. We're just going to test the waters here and see what's out there. Obviously, KMP would have been in, and I sent it out to some other town council services out there, so those, those will be doing to my office by November 30th. I'll keep the council updated when we get those in and, you know, how we're going to proceed with next steps. And just a reminder, I don't know if our town clerk updated us on this, but we have a shred day coming up on this Thursday, I believe, in the morning. The truck will be in the parking lot, so if anybody's got, you know, sensitive documents they want to have shredded, they can drop off at Town Hall between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00. And that's all on the line for you here down in Florida, so I'm certainly open to any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager?
We missed that first little bit. What did he say on the first point?
The CFO position is.
CFO, yep.
CFO, yeah, the Chief Financial Officer position for the county and school that we discussed. That position has been had a test.
All right. Well, we thank you for taking time out of your, of your vacation time, and very much appreciate it. Enjoy yourself, and we will see you soon.
You're always working vacations.
Yes.
So I don't go home to a thousand emails.
We will see you soon.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, Cat, Tony.
See you, Tony.
School committee report. The school committee met last week. The main topic of, on the agenda, evolved around MCAS presentations. We had Eileen Pearson from the Gorman Fort Banks, Andrea O'Larry from the Cummings, Brian Curley from the middle school, and Matt Crombie from the high school. All the principals came and gave very detailed presentations of their action plans and results in the MCAS. You know, there's always areas of concern. There was a lot of talk around loss of learning due to COVID and how it would affect the MCAS throughout the state. And it was very intent and detailed presentation on those subjects. That is it for school committee. Commercial, Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations have not met since our last meeting. I believe they will have a meeting prior to our next, and there will be a presentation by the town manager then. Old business, Trash Enterprise Fund, Trash Abatement, Trash Enforcement. We were just told by the town manager and along with Counselors Honan and Mujero, we've been working diligently on that and hope to have something come before us in the not-too-distant future. Ordinance Review Committee recommendations. We will have a public hearing in the Harvey Room next meeting, December 6th. Along with, as Vice President stated earlier, we will have a public hearing, at least on the CBD, on the, on the time strings. And we will look at commercial, uh, municipal lots possibly a little later.
Okay.
Yeah, probably won't have.
Comply with community laws and such, yeah.
And the committee handbook also, I believe, is. Continued.
We're going to continue that.
Yes. And Town Council vote for 247,775 for the water main master plan, the long-term capital improvement plan. That, as the public hearing was, is continued. On new business, we have multiple items that are going to be referred to finance. We have the Town Council transfer $2,873 from Town Council Reserve for a memorial fund, memorial bench for the Cooper Green Memorial Bench. We will refer that to finance. We have a Town Council transf, um, we're going to hold on the next one, I believe. Water sewer budget amendment. We are also going to refer to finance. We have new business on the sale of land request on 15 to 17 Walden Street, which is also going to be reserved, uh, referred to finance. That is a very small triangular piece of town land that is at the.
Is that Muffin Town?
Yes, it's where Muffin Town is, and it's the, it's a, it's a very small triangular piece off the sidewalk that is kind of worthless land to the town, but that's going to be referred to finance.
Can I make a comment?
Quick question, yep.
I have just been through this process with a family matter, with a tiny little triangular thing like this. And it just went on for the longest time. And somebody, and I think it was the town, paid a fortune for this lawyer to go through ancestry and find all the relatives that might have been involved, so.
Now, this is a town-owned piece of property that.
So we won't have to go through ancestry.
Yes, it shouldn't be. It's not going to be a big money item. Yes.
So let's get rid of it.
Well, so that's done. We don't even have to refer. Barbara took care of that for us. That's gone. We will refer that to finance, and there was also a motion coming out that the Town Council declare the following fire vehicles a surplus and dispose of them to the highest bidder or take any other action relative thereto. A 1989 GMC Topkick Model, formerly Rescue One, and a 1987 Pierce dash Pumper, formerly Engine Three. So that will be referred to finance as well.
Go get them, Rich.
I know what it's like, Rich.
Second round of public comments.
Excellent.
Another three minutes. Jack, you can go first. Jacked out, pre, jacked out.
One, I'm in one. Thank you very much.
Well, I mean, you ought to state your name and precinct, not me.
Did I do that?
No, you did not.
Jacked out, precinct one.
Thank you.
Jim, the reason why I asked you to be patient.
Okay.
Because I was watching a meeting a month or so ago, and there was one person in this room commenting. And you held him for three minutes. And the person that was talking from, you know, the comment period was probably a hundred-year resident of, you know, family resident of the town, that owns a lot of property and is a very nice guy, but you wanted to hold him for three minutes. I think you should consider the circumstances before you consider the three-minute rule. If you could do that, I, I'd really appreciate it. I want to get back to this bike lane proposal. And like I mentioned before, it, it gives a young person, and I saw this in an instance, Washington Ave, going down towards the High Tide, and there's a sharo, I believe, on the right side going towards the Oceans. Two young girls were on bikes, and they were smart enough to be on the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. Obviously didn't trust the bike sharos. Thank good, thank goodness for right-thinking young people. I think if you give young people an opportunity to get mixed up in traffic, it's going to end up in a catastrophe. No question in my mind that will end up in a catastrophe. I hope everybody considers the safety of children. I don't know if a child drew this picture. It doesn't look it. It looks like it was proposed to be a child, but, you know, very well done. The safety of the children on bikes, especially when they're going fast, uphill, downhill, struggling to get uphill, going fast downhill, mixed up in school traffic, when you're coming down towards the restaurants, towards the gas station, and that type of thing. And the gentleman that was speaking here gave his pitch and said, take it or leave it. And he walked out the door. I don't think he's ever biked in Winthrop. I've been biking here my whole life. I, I recently lost a truck because of a crash into it, so I biked for two months. Or I biked at 10:30 at night. There's no charge. Down Washington Ave. Am I three minutes up, Jim? You're looking jostled over there.
Pretty much.
How many minutes do I have left?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Took a deep breath, and you looked at your timer there. Have some.
No, I didn't look at my timer.
Yeah, I did. Have some patience with the people that are talking. I'm the only person talking in this room. Don't be looking at the clock, Jim.
Actually, I wasn't looking at the.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you. And to answer a couple of things. First, I was not looking at a clock. I don't even have a clock on me. I was looking for the name of the gentleman you referred to. His name was Andrew. He does not work for Mastard. He, he works for the consulting firm. He is not telling, he is not making the decisions. He's the middleman giving us the information he received. So that's, I, I just want clarification on that. And on, no, Jack, I'm not getting into a back and forth.
He's not listening to my comments.
He's not paid to listen to your comments. He's working as a consultant. He's the in-between. It would be nice to your comments to have Mastard here to be able to ask them questions in person. I would appreciate, I would like that also. And, and, and on the three-minute time, that's a council rule. I didn't make it. I'm just trying to abide. I don't have, I don't have a timer here that I use, but I'm trying to do the best I can. Any counselor, if they, you know, if there's, if there's a really intent or, you know, you try to give privilege where privilege is due, any council, including myself, could waive that and, and give them a couple of extra minutes. So we try to do the best we can. We're not trying to rush out of here. This is not a, a 10-minute meeting. We do the best we can, and we try to get as much input as humanly possible. It's, it's not a question and answer period, but we do take it, I, I think I can speak for everyone, that we take everybody's comments very seriously, and we do the best we can with what we have. But I also, I always thank you for your comments, Jack. Anybody else? Yes.
Karen Chavez, Precinct Two. I purposely waited for the town manager to give his report because he always says I am stager. I just have a couple of things. Just sometime maybe in the near future, an update on the Public Safety Building, and also what's going on with the middle school.
Okay, it, um, okay, we will get information to you.
I didn't exactly tonight.
Nope, nope, we will get information to you on that.
But like I say, the town manager says the, I always say it before he has a chance to.
Public Safety Building is being worked on, and we hope to have some information in the very near future for, for the town.
But I heard that two months ago, so.
Nope, and that's still near future. Thank you, Karen. No other public comment. Public relations. As the town manager did say, we will be having, on the 17th, a town shredding day. The trucks will be in Town Hall parking lot for residents. Paper shredding only, no newspapers, just important documents, tax returns and such. Town Hall will be closed from 9:00 to 12:00. Committee, still committee openings on the planning board. We encourage people with that expertise to please apply. And Vice President Mujero, any public relations?
Yeah, so I just learned that this Friday is the Pumpkin Drop, which was a, a pretty popular event last. I'm sorry, Saturday.
Saturday at Fort Banks.
I put it in my calendar for Friday, so I'm glad I opened my mouth because now I can check my calendar. Okay, it's the 19th, correct. Anyways, it was a great event last year. I'm hoping to go, even though I don't have a pumpkin, but maybe I can borrow one from the clerk.
I'll get you one.
On a more serious note, the MBTA situation. We've, we've done a lot, and it seems like, you know, the powers that be are pushing to, to continue down that path of, of the new bus routes. Just in addition to these new bus routes that don't seem super popular with a lot of people in town, the MBTA has not been the best partner to the town of Winthrop, I think, in years past. And I don't mean to get on a soapbox, but it's just really frustrating, I think. And we've asked for them to come meet with us in person. I think that ask is still out there, just regards to safety on the bus, safety of the bus drivers driving the bus, and where the bus routes are going. I think these are all things that we need to, to tackle at some point or another. So I'll just mention again publicly, we've asked them to come and talk with us, and they haven't responded. Is that right? We haven't received a response, so, you know, just again throwing that out there.
Counsel Flack.
I just wanted to reinforce the Pumpkin Drop and remind everybody, as Karina mentioned it, if you have pumpkins, to bring them to Karina, and she will get them to the Pumpkin Drop. It's going to be at the Gorman Fort Bank School on Saturday at 10 o'clock.
Come here with your shredding first, and then go to the Pumpkin Drop.
Exactly.
Counsel Aiello.
No, the shredding is on Thursday.
Oh, on Thursday.
Just, just an update. The, the, the treatment of the town by the T, I agree with the Vice President. Doesn't make you feel any better. The rest of municipalities in the region don't like the new bus plan, don't understand why it's been happening. They know they don't have the money, the buses or the personnel to operate it. They haven't put it in their budget. They haven't done anything. It has caused agita across the region. A meeting with the T at this point would be a waste of our time.
Yeah.
And citizens' time. I think in January, we have got to think about an offensive. One note I would make to the town manager, there are a lot of people trying to get the, um, the four-month to five-month closure of the Sona Tunnel pushed back a little bit, but it's still, it's still scheduled for April. So one thing about the ferry, April, May, right, right in there?
May, May 20.
May, yeah. So one thing about the ferry is we've got to make sure the repairs are done well in advance because that's going to be a critical lifeline and part of what I hope is additional ferry service from Deer, Deer Island. January should be the time to focus with new people there.
Counsel DiMarco.
I would like to address some of the things that.
It's going to be a full court press in January.
Counsel DiMarco.
So I would like to address some of the things that Jack brought up because safety on Revere Street is obviously something that's very important to me. As far as the bike sharos are concerned, Jack, I actually like the bike sharos, and I'll tell you why. Is my wife and kids, they come out of the house and they ride their bikes to Deer Island. And the only reason I like the bike sharos now that they're in place is because it tells drivers, at least they see a picture of a bike on a road, and they know that bikers are going to be on the road. So from that perspective, I like it. As far as the Revere Street, and, and Steve, I need you to fact-check me on this. My understanding is that if they put the bike lanes in on Revere Street by Fort Banks, that where the bike lane is, that's actually going to be used for cars going to the Fort Bank School to make it safer, and bikes will not be allowed in those lanes during school commuting hours. Is that accurate?
That's correct. It'll be, it'll be a multi-use lane. It'll be for.
Okay.
School in and out, the, the traffic queue, and then on off-hours, it'll serve as a bike lane.
Okay.
I'll make signage to state that.
And, and there is a plan to more than replace all the trees that would come down, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, so like I said, there's seven trees proposed to come down, all of which one, uh, four, uh, two to four caliber. Small.
Okay.
Fairly young trees.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to be clear with you on that, Jack, so that way you knew all the info.
Counsel Belcher.
Um, just about the MBTA project. Again, thank you, Vice President Mujero and Counselor Aiello for bringing it up. We are paying attention to it. I know there's a feeling that we haven't done a lot, but we have. I've been talking about it for about five months now. So we, we're working, we're still working. It is not a done deal. If residents could submit their feedback online and through the email provided by the Bus Network redesign project, that can only help us. So we're still fighting, and the residents should continue to do so as well.
Counsel Munson.
Thank you. Our food and goods drive is still underway with the Odd Fellows on behalf of the Winthrop Food Pantry. Is, we're open to receive donations, and we have accumulated quite a lot, but we are still looking to get more. And, and it will be culminating on Saturday after Thanksgiving with a community lunch from 12:00 to 2:00 where all veterans living in Winthrop are invited. We've already extended the invitation through Phil Ronan, the. We've already extended the invitation through Phil Ronan, the VSO, as well as Peg Lyons of the Housing Authority, but anyone that's listening to this or watching this should know that all veterans living in Winter are invited to attend a nice community lunch at the Odd Fellows here in Winter from 12 to 2 on Saturday, November 26th. I just wanted to just say, the veterans event recently in Town Hall was beautifully done. It was, it was, and I just want to personally say thank you for your service to our country.
Joe. Council Fucil.
Yes, I just want to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving. I hope everyone gets a lot of food as well as football.
Council Honan.
I don't have anything to add.
And I would just say, you know, we did have an election last week. Thank you to town clerk Denise. And her entire staff. It was an incredibly crowded election. I mean, it was basically numbers compared to a presidential election. I think Denise has some of the numbers there maybe, but we had roughly 67, 6800 voters. We did have probably 35% of that, or 40% of it was early voting. We literally had, you know, machines overloaded in terms of heating, that there was, they were getting so much action that they kind of went down here and there. But it was run really well, even having the two locations worked out, I think, flawlessly. I think a lot of it has to do with the early voting, but the staffing was great. There were a couple of changes in terms of, instead of asking for your street, they're asking for your last name. You didn't have to check out, you just had to put your ballot in and see if it went through. But, but a great job done by all, and we thank you for that. And also to piggyback on what Council Munson said, the veterans event, Richard Honan, just, he's just an incredible man, and did a fantastic job, along with American Legion, Fire and Police. It was just so well done, and I agree with Council Munson. Thank, thank you all for your service, all the veterans, town manager included. Thank you for your service. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Council DiMarco, second by Council Belcher. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. I know the ayes have it. Thank you.